Welcome back everyone to our February 10th City Council Budget Retreat. I will turn it back over to our city manager to introduce our next item.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. Do want to thank everyone for lunch. Just to reiterate, we are here at the city's Human Services Building and part of the opportunity this afternoon in having lunch was to eat those things that are purchased with SNAP, and it was a delicious lunch, and so I want to thank you again for that. I want to acknowledge arriving this afternoon, we have our Commissioner of the Revenue Mitch Knuckles with us, and our Director of Economic Development, Margaret Upsher, amongst other city staff. This afternoon, we've got a couple presentations, but leading off, we have our Financial Advisor, Davenport Company, and I'm going to have our Chief Financial Officer, Donna Witt, introduce him this afternoon. Donna?
Thank you, and many of you have worked with Courtney Rogers in the past. He's the Senior Vice President with Davenport Company. They've been our financial advisors since 2005 and have worked closely with us as we've developed borrowing structures and funding structures and how to make them the most effective for the city of Lynchburg. So, he's here to present a little bit on why we do what we do and why it's important. So, thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Witt.
Thank you, Donna. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Just to give, I know I just met some of you for the first time. Thank you for having me this afternoon. Just a little bit of background, just so you kind of know who I am. I have been doing this a little over 30 years. My partner David Rose and I have been working for the city going back to 2005, and we are about to celebrate our 25th anniversary with Davenport Company. So, this is what we do. We love doing this. We love getting out in front of you all, talking about budget and CIP, but also getting in front of the rating agencies. We're going to talk a little bit about that this afternoon. We, just as you, many of you know, were in New York last week. We are just getting some of that information back. It's not all public, so I can't talk about everything, but suffice it say that we were expecting and have gotten good news. I'll say that, that the things are going well. Later in the presentation, I'm going to go through and go back to some of the comments that the agencies have given us to try to give you a flavor for what they think of the city, going back the last time we talked to them, which was about three or four years ago. But also, I'm going to go back right after the credit crisis. Many of you might remember 2008, 2009, when we had the credit crisis. We did a transaction in 2009, and so it kind of gives you a flavor of some of the things and the way they were thinking about local governments as they went through the credit crisis. Not projecting that we're going to have a recession, but there's always that possibility. We've heard the rumblings out there in the marketplace. There are several signs, such as the inverted yield curve, that are pointing in that direction that there might be a recession. I think with, obviously going through this whole COVID crisis has put us all in an unusual situation where there is no history. We can go back and say X plus Y is going to end up being a Z. It just, it really has thrown a wrench, I think, in a lot of the way that people think. So, with that, oh, wrong way. There we go. Down is up, okay. So, I'm actually, I think what I might do is grab this mic. The mic for me? Looking for the green light, was not one. All right. So, I mentioned kind of our history with the city and who David and I are, and a lot of the things that we do. So, I'll roll over and talk a little bit more about some of the things we have done, not only for you but for others. So, part of our job is also to help with capital planning. We run a number of models for Donna as she gives us and starts thinking about the next five years of capital planning. How's that going to impact your debt ratios? How's that going to impact the way the rating agencies are going to look at it? So, with our staff, we will run a number of those models as you're working through your budget at this point in time. Part of it is, once that CIP is adopted by you, is actually going through and executing the transaction. So, part of what we're doing last week with the rating agencies and moving forward will be moving forward projects that you all approved, bond funding for in the past, and we'll talk about a little bit of that here in just a moment. Also, thinking about budget development strategies. Some of you might remember the strategy we came up with a number of years ago, where one of the issues was we were borrowing money, putting it in the bank, but then it wasn't getting spent fast because projects got delayed. So, one of the things that we did was rather than move forward with paying the interest and paying back the debt we just borrowed before the project even finished or started in that, for that matter, we came up with what we called a just-in-time funding strategy. We presented to the Finance Committee and then ultimately to you all at City Council, and we've done that now several times. Part of what we're doing with this bond issue is paying off that, basically it's a line of credit. We only pay interest once we've drawn the money, and then we permanently finance it once we, once we get to the stage of going to the bond market. So, this trip, we're, we're basically borrowing, the major project is the police station, but we're also going to pay off the line of credit. I think, if my memory serves, we did a $42 million line of credit, but we're only bought, we only used about 30 million of it. And that just speaks to how we thought we were going to do 42, but projects didn't move as fast as maybe department heads told us they thought they wanted them to move. And so, as a result, we ended up saving roughly $12 million of interest, if you will, interest on that 12 million, over the last couple of years. So, that, that helps us kind of push things off until we actually really need to pay that debt service. And that's going to be important, as you see in a moment when I show you some of the numbers. Another part is financial policies. Every couple of years, we are asked by staff to review your financial policies. Is there anything new? The rating agencies are constantly coming up with new methodologies. Moody's just went through a change. We're, we're still getting our hands around what they are, how they're looking at things differently, so it may be in the future that we come back and maybe adjust those policies. And that's part of our job, is to make sure that we're keeping staff up on changes in the marketplace. And then the last thing is serving as a liaison between you all and the rating agencies. We are, with, with the number of clients that we have around the state and the region, we are talking to the agencies very often. And so, with that, we kind of know what they're looking for. We understand the type of things that they're, that are important to them, and hopefully we'll relay some of those to you later in the presentation. So, as I mentioned, the 23 geo-bonds that we're going to be selling here very shortly, the major project, of course, is the police headquarters. These are all projects that were appropriated already by you all, previous councils. There's some other city, school, and fleet capital projects. There's also water, sewer, stormwater, and some airport projects that are mixed in. So, all told, there's about 45 million on what I'll call the city school/fleet side. I'll call it the general governmental side, if you will. And then the enterprise funds between water, sewer, stormwater, and airport will be around 26 million. Wrong way. I keep wanting to go up. So, one of the things that we do is we're looking at the, the impact on your budget is this graphic at the top of the table shows what is your existing outstanding annual debt service. So, roughly $16 million a year. Our projection going forward is about 2.8 million and then 3.4 million, once we start paying PNI back in year two, so that our new estimated debt service is going to be about 18.9 million. Now, we've, we're very conservative with our interest rates. We hope that we will come in without any major changes in the market. We will do better than this. But for the moment, again, we're trying to be conservative with our projections. Your debt service budget at the moment is 17.7, which means we have to find another million, too. With the growth in your revenue, staff says we'll be able to take care of that. Hopefully, again, that number will come in a little bit lower. But what's important on this slide, for a couple of my upcoming slides, is to know that the result is about 18.9 million. Will be in your budget going forward, meaning you've set it in this 2024 budget, and it'll be there in the future. The enterprise funds, I'm not going to get into those because basically those are going to be repaid from revenues of their various systems, and, and so those are expected to be paid for with no issues. But again, this is non-enterprise fund, general fund only with fleet, and what you'll see is that brown line represents that 18.9 million, that new number in your budget, if you would. The other bars are basically your existing debt service. That's the dark green. The light green is our projections of the 2023 issue. And so, what you'll see there is it's pretty flat over the next three years, but then it starts to drop off. And that's important because that's where we plan to put some of the new projects that you may appropriate down the road in your CIP, assuming that you want to issue bonds for them or have to because you don't have enough revenues to pay for at the time. We will use the dropdown in the debt service. So, from here to here is basically about a million dollars. From here to here is a couple, $3 million. So, what happens is we will try to work in future projects so that there's no increase necessary unless the projects are so large that cause us to have to go above that line. And what you'll see in a moment, that might be the case. What we did here is we, we said, okay, if we keep that 18.9 million, how much could we undertake if we, going back to this graph, are able to layer in some debt service in the future years for projects that you're considering in the future? We use a very conservative 5% interest rate over the, basically an assumed 20-year payback period. And what you'll see at the bottom here is that essentially about $42 million over the next five years could be paid back without increasing revenues or without finding additional revenues in your budget. And then as future debt service is paid off past the next five years, maybe another 34 and a half million, totaling about 77 million. And I'll tell you that if interest rates are better than this, if we use 4%, for instance, we're only talking about maybe $10 million more. So, it's not like a huge difference interest rate-wise. Maybe it goes to 87 if, in fact, we're able to get a lower interest rate in the marketplace. The reason I bring all that up is to think about, and I'm sorry, the, the graphic did not like our graphic, your, I guess, the, the monitor here, but really, this is the number that, that you want to look at, and that is the bond funding. When you look at your, this is your adopted CIP, the last adopted CIP, has $350 million of projects out there. Paid for, 200 million of it is paid for out of bond funding. If you look at this graphic, basically 56% of the CIP is assumed to be paid for with bonds. Remember, I just said 77 million. That's a lot smaller than 196, which means if you move forward with this CIP as is, and a lot of it's transportation-related, a lot of it is matching the funds the state's going to be giving you for some of those transportation projects, because it alone was, I think, 100 million, if I remember right. So, if that's the course of action, you're probably going to need more than 18.9 million going forward. Meaning, as you start thinking about this budget and budgets in the future, you're going to have to continue thinking about these projects and dollars that need to be set aside for projects in the future. Not only debt service, but also pay-go, because we want to have a mix. We want to have a balance. We don't want to put everything onto the leverage side, because, we're not going to get into it today, but we have what I'll call credit card limits. They're debt ratios. They're part of your fiscal policy, your financial policies. One of them is the total outstanding amount of debt divided by your assessed value or the full value, property value of the city, real and personal. The other one is annual debt service divided by your budget. You don't want to be paying too much of your budget in debt service, just like folks think about how much of your home mortgage payments are your, a percentage of your revenues you bring in from a salary standpoint. That's the way to think about it. So, one of the other things we like to take into consideration is what's going on with your fund balance. So, we've been able to build fund balance up with, obviously, a lot of us in 2020 had no idea what was going to happen. You were able to get some dollars from the federal government. You were, we got internet sales that helped sales tax. We had a lot of, on the expenditure side, you had vacancies, still have, that you, you may have budgeted for full vacancies but weren't able to fill them, so you end up with a little extra money there. You had revenues that came in a little stronger than we anticipated. So, we were able to put some money back, but then what we've done in using, basically, projections for the end of this year, you've used some of it in your budget for projects, for capital projects. So, that's that balance I talked about, is having some money going toward capital projects, pay-go, if you will, so that we don't put everything on the credit card. We don't put everything on leverage on the debt service side. So, as a result, this number is starting to come down, and the typical way that governments will do it is they'll look at last year's, you, you don't want to, in your budget, assume you're going to end this year well. What I mean by that is, here we are at the beginning of February, middle of February, and you're trying to put a budget together. We still have, what, four months, March, April, May, June, to get to the end of the fiscal year. I'll go back to 2020. What happened in March of 2020? We had COVID hit, and we had three months there of unknown, and so we didn't know how we were going to end the year. So, you can't take, oh, we expect to have an extra X many dollars at the end of the year, let's go ahead and put it in our budget for '24 for pay-go projects. So, typically, what governments do is they go back and, we just got our audit back for FY '22, we had a surplus of X, our fund balance is good, maybe we'll use some of that surplus for 2024. So, think of it as odd, odd to odd, even to even. Even year of '22, you take some of that surplus, you put it in the even year budget of '24. So, that way you know exactly how many dollars you have. So, I say all that because what's important is, again, keeping this at a level that's above our policies, which is good, but for those rainy day funds, I have a client that just had a tornado that hit late last fall. Actually, I'm sorry, actually, it hit in January. Take it back. It was January, and they're in the middle of all the FEMA stuff. Well, guess what? FEMA doesn't walk in with a checkbook. FEMA walks in and says, I need you to keep all your receipts, but you got to pay for everything, and one day, you'll give us the receipts and we'll pay you back. I've got one client who had a ice storm, and five years later, they were still trying to get their money back from FEMA. It does take time. So, so that's just one example of why you need a fund balance up here. The other reason that I like to explain to, to folks, many of us get paid every couple of weeks, maybe once a month, so we have a pretty steady revenue income, but for local governments, you can only get paid two or three times a year. So, you get a big old chunk of money, and then guess what? You have to pay a lot of expenditures. That money goes down, then you get some revenues come back up. So, you have, we're measuring at June 30. So, a lot of times at June 30, things look good because you just collected some revenues. But I know I've got one client that pays a lot of debt service in July, so right after June 30, if their fund balance goes, because after they pay a lot of that debt service out. So, it is important to keep that number, and there's a reason why we do a measure at a certain point in time, and we have policies. It may not make sense when you're looking at it on one given day, but when you think about the spectrum of the year and how you need that, those funds to pay just operating expenses, it, it does become important. You may have already heard some of this earlier today. You may hear some of it later today, but I'll go over a couple of things as we were thinking about it. Some of the challenges that we got, that we're going to have over the next three or five years is, of course, one, we want to keep our, our finances strong, because it's important from a credit rating perspective. While we expect to have good news on our ratings, what we don't want is bad news, and bad news can cost you more than good news from the standpoint of, you think about somebody who buys your bonds five years ago, and then all of a sudden, you get downgraded. They're like, well, I'm not going to buy their bonds this time. I can't trust them. So, as a result, we have to find other buyers, and that buyer pool starts shrinking. For those of you who are in sales, you kind of know that you want to have as bigger a group of folks buying or potentially putting a bid out for your product as possible. The fewer folks mean that you end up having to lower the price on that product to get it sold, right? Well, guess what? In bonds, when you lower the price, it's an inverse reaction to interest rates. Rates go up. We saw that in 2020 when COVID hit. Everybody wanted their money out of the bond funds. The bond fund folks had to sell bonds. As a result, interest rates jumped up until the federal government stepped in and said, we'll help liquidity. And so, that happens here. If you're, if you get downgraded, it makes it tougher for us to sell the bonds, and there's probably going to be a penalty in terms of interest rates if that happens. So, it's important to take all this into account, to keep ourselves strong, and some of the things that we've got to worry about are things like inflation, of course. We don't know exactly when that's finally going to get tamed, but at some point, it will. But in the meantime, we've still got to figure out how to keep our new employees coming in. We got to retain our existing staff. We're seeing it all over the place, where folks are having to increase salaries in order to not only retain but, but get new police officers in the door, as well as other emergency personnel. I mean, not just, it's not just in Virginia. It's across the country that everyone is, is struggling with that. And so, if your neighbors are raising, guess what? You're going to have to keep pace. And so, that's just, we're going to be chasing our tails for a while till this subsides. An economic downturn, I'm going to give you some comments from the rating agencies. Again, as I mentioned earlier, after the '08, '09 credit crisis, you'll see some of the things that happened here. And then increases in debt services, I was just talking about. Not only the projects you want to do, but the cost of those projects keep, keep going So, these are the comments that I was referring to. So, this is 2009, right after the credit crisis. We went to the bond market, and so I've got comments from all three agencies here. So, this kind of gives you a flavor for not only what they're thinking, but also the things that were happening here. You can see what Moody's said on the first one is, it was a challenging year for many issuers due to the recession. A lot of sensitive revenues, sales tax and meals in particular, performed under budget. So, that's a $3 million hit to your budget right there, and that was back in 2009. You know, on a percentage basis, probably much larger today. They said, they went on to say, given the shortfall and the budgeted use, we used 16.2 million of reserves. It was raining. It's a rainy day fund. We had to use some of the reserves. With other favorable variances only partially replenished, we weren't able to put everything back. Basically, they expected fund balance to decrease by $11 million net-net. And then they said, moving forward, they believe that revenue growth will continue slowing, but will, will likely impact the city's ability to do the, the pay-go, essentially saying that you use your pay-go to balance the budget, and that probably that's going to put either, you're going to have to stop with some of the capital projects, pause them, or, or go into further debt levels. Fitch went on to note about hiring freezes, furloughs, things like that, that you had to do in response to the projected revenue declines, and then, again, the, the projected fund balance reductions. And then S&amp;P's very similarly noted that, hey, we were in a recession, you end up having to make some tough choices. So, it's something that could happen if things go the wrong way later this year or into next year. Now, as I said, we can't, we have gotten some news, can't make it all public, so I want to go back to what, the last time we talked to the rating agencies was just prior to the pandemic. So, December 2019, things were going well. I wanted you to hear some of the positive things they said about the city. They talked about your history of maintaining healthy reserve levels because of your long-term forecasting and adherence to the policies. So, very important to them. Those policies are very, very important to the rating agencies, but even more important, of course, is maintaining them. They talked about consecutive years of positive operations, which, which contributes to basically surpluses, and that's despite, again, your practice of allocating some of the former, I guess, a few, past years, I should say, of, of surpluses for one-time capital expenditures, again, pay-go. They also talked about fund balance, that, you know, that very strong levels, that the reserves were all stable. You're still below the national reserve median. That's one of the things that is sometimes difficult for us to grasp, because we're very strong, but we may not be as strong as other double As in other parts of the country, or even higher rated double As and triple As. While we are very, we, Davenport, are very positive on Lynchburg, we may not be as strong as Northern Virginia, obviously. We're not Northern Virginia, right? One of the things that, that does keep us from getting above that double A plus with Fitch and S&amp;P that we currently have, as well as the double A two with Moody's, are things that are tough for us to control. The economy, for one. I liken the economy to a very large ship. You have some control over it, but it's very hard to turn it, and you can't turn it fast. Demographics is one of the things that has held us back for years. Poverty levels, income levels, we don't match up to Charlottesville. We don't match up to Virginia Beach. We don't match up to some of the Northern Virginia cities. So, it's tough for us to get to that triple A level. I'm going to show you some comps in a minute, and maybe some of that will come evident. They're just larger than us. The rating agencies, right or wrong, have this preconceived notion that the larger you are, the more you can spread the pain, that if, because they're always thinking in a negative context. What happens if? What happens if the world falls apart? So, if there's pain, you have more folks, you have more value to spread it out. So, size does make a difference. So, that's one of the reasons why I want to highlight that, is because while we think this is a very good and strong policy and levels that you've got over and above your policies, they're still looking at it saying, hey, you're actually still below your currently rated median. S&amp;P goes on to talk about budgetary performance. It's been very strong overall. These are all positive things, talking about the generation of surpluses over the last several years, which have in turn increased revenues, keeping them at very strong levels. So, they recognize that you have them at very good, strong levels. Fitch goes on to say that in the event of an actual revenue decline, they were talking about a moderate economic decline, because they do these kind of what-if scenarios. The city would maintain reserves at or above its policy level, basically at that 10% through active expenditure management. So, they're basically saying, hey, we, 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 we think that they will probably keep their reserve levels by virtue of either making adjustments on the expenditure side, which they mentioned, but you also could make it on the revenue side as well. So, what I like to do is go through and just make some observations on some comparables. So, this, you'll see down in the sources, sorry, is MFRA. We actually subscribe to Moody's' database, and so what we did is we went in and got the Virginia First Cities that they have, and if they weren't one of Moody's' rated entities or we couldn't get it, we actually went through and got their, their audits. I will tell you that we left one out, which is Hopewell, because their audit was like from 2019, and it just, because of 2019, it being so old, we just felt like it wouldn't be a good comp, so we left them out. So, when you look at population, again, you guys are kind of sort of right in the middle in terms of, or maybe toward the, the, just edge of the middle in terms of population. In terms of your general fund revenues, you see you're kind of in that, I guess, bottom third, if you will. This is one I think is very interesting, because this is more comparable to me when you start taking into account size, and that is the general fund revenues on a per-capita basis. And what's interesting is, you can see that if you draw that line down here, you're kind of just below the 50% level. You see the median being at 2,700, you're right just below that median, but then when you kind of look at the numbers, I would say about two-thirds of these are, are larger than where yours, yours is. Full value, again, this is real, personal machinery and tools, shows you where you are, again, in relation to this group. Median being about 5 billion, you're at 7.5. And then when you put it on a per-capita basis, you're right, you, you actually are the median, believe it or not. You're right in the middle. Unassigned fund balance, you see, when you, when you look at it, very strong. We also looked at the projected, once we use some of it, we're going to be sort of right in the middle. Median's still a little bit below us. So, we do have a strong fund balance compared to the rest. And again, another way to really bring it more of an apples, an apples comparison is on a percentage basis to your revenues. You can see you're right in the middle again. And the, once we actually use it and bring it down, we'll be just below the median. So, hopefully, that's helpful. I'm happy to answer some questions, but I wanted to kind of give you that sort of base as you're going into your budget and thinking about the next steps. We'll be working with Donna over the next several weeks on the CIP to get something that works within our policies, but also we'll, we'll help you guys through the future as you continue to make investments in the city and make it stronger.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers. Vice Mayor Farley?
Might be an ignorant question. So, Roanoke's technically not a first city?
Technically, I guess, Roanoke's not a Virginia First City, I don't believe, no.
Which is interesting, because I'd be curious then, amongst the cities, not just first cities, who would we likely most be similar to? And I, while they're a little larger, it'd probably be Roanoke. So, I don't know if you could speak to some of those comparisons potentially? I know they're not listed, but just given population size similarities and especially regionally in the Commonwealth, I mean, the overwhelming bulk of the larger populace are on the other side of Richmond, yet we're here dead center. So, I, can we speak to that at all? Like, what, how we might relate to Roanoke then, since really, we're, us and them are pretty much it?
I, I think you're right. I think, you know, when you look at and you think about the demographics of where you are, the geographic, I should say, where you are, you know, when you look at size, Portsmouth- are, the geographic, I should say where you are, you know, when you look at size, Portsmouth is obviously a little bit different, being down there, they've got the military, you got Norfolk, Virginia Beach, Hampton, all right in there, Hampton same way when you go down to that side. And you go to the other side, it's Harrisonburg. Harrisonburg might be the closest that of a first city, even though they're smaller, but they're kind of out there as well. The difference there is they're on the interstate. And so they have the benefit of that, just the number of cars and trucks going by them every day.
Marjett, might you know the MSA for the Harrisonburg area?
About $100,000.
Because like I know, I mean, you look at Harrisonburg itself, sure, it's smaller, but then similar to Harris, Charlottesville, you look at Charlottesville, it's half the size of Lynchburg. But the region, populationally, is right there with the city of Lynchburg. So those are just some of the comparisons. I was like, I was interested by this data, but then at the same time, like, thank you. So the MSA, who's that, John?
$140,000.
For Harrisonburg, and we're barely, yeah, we're easily 100,000 more. I mean, so like, those are just some of the things that I'm looking at. Interesting analysis, but I just, I don't know if there's really anything we could do with it, but thank you.
Sure. Yeah, it's, when we generally try to do these, we try to look at size and similar rating. But for this purpose, we thought maybe the first cities might be just a good just to see.
Still helpful, thank you.
You bet.
Any other questions? No? Thank you very much for your very thorough presentation. Mr. Benda.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, I may mention that we have our Commissioner of Revenue here with us. He was tuning in online and heard many of the conversations earlier. I see that we're just this side of 2:00. And what I propose, if you're amenable, he could maybe answer some of those questions right now for you and your peers, and then start promptly at 2:00 with the last two presentations, if that's, if that works for you and your peers.
Sure.
Mr. Commissioner, if you'd like to come forward, you're welcome to sit at the table or come to the podium if you'd like.
Thank you, Mr. Knuckles.
Thank you all for having me. I'll be glad to answer any of the questions pertaining to real estate tax relief for disabled veterans or anything I can answer, I'll be glad to.
The conversation earlier, I believe, was variables associated with senior disabled tax relief. Do you have numbers or the percentages that you could share with our City Council, maybe how the process works?
Well, what we have, we recently adopted the new minimum for the income and net worth limits. And we also have now tied our incomes to the increase in Social Security, which is, in my opinion, a great thing, because we would have people that would get increases in Social Security, and sometimes that would knock them out of the program because the income exceeded the minimum amount. The new minimum for, I mean, maximum for income, household income, is $42,400. And this year, with the increase, the 8.9% increase in Social Security, next year, that's going to drive it to $46,100. And it does round up to the next 100. It actually goes to 46088, which will round it to 46100. The net worth is a limitation of $100,000, but that does not include the value of the home and one acre of land. So if it's more than an acre of land or additional lots of that nature, then that's included as part of the net worth, but not the value of the home and one acre of land. And then we also capped the dollar amount at $2,500, and that equates basically to a house valued at $225,000. And then just, I mean, if you want some general numbers, it's 533 qualified households, and it was $585,000 in tax relief that was provided to our citizens. And it is 65 years of age and older, or permanently and totally disabled applicants.
Donna shared with us where her husband purchases his hunting equipment. So transitioning to the Wayfair component, can you kind of give us some numbers and some percentages that you're seeing?
Yeah, and one thing I do want to point out is the point Donna made. We were getting a lot of online sales tax dollars. If the company has NEXUS, they call it NEXUS, or a location site in Virginia, they were already required to collect and remit the sales tax. And I don't have a number of those that were doing, believe it or not, there are over 5,000 online dealers that we receive money from in our penny local option. 5,000, I was shocked. It equates to 16, 16.1% of the total. We received 3.3 million from online sales folks. And the way we can distinguish between that is a retail seller in Virginia is a category 10, and an online sales tax dealer is a 12. And it's 3.3 million out of our total of about 20.5 million. And it's about 16.1% is online sales tax dollars we receive.
Okay.
And then anybody interested in the disabled veteran? We have the exemption for the 100% service-connected disabled veteran began in 2011. And we have 158 qualified disabled veterans. And the value of the real estate is 30.3 million. Jeff mentioned 36 earlier today. And if it's a 20% increase in residential, it'll go from 30 to 36. And it was $336,000 that was granted as an exemption to our veterans. We have 203 vehicles that qualify. The vehicle exemption for the disabled veteran was effective January 1st of '21. We have 203 qualified veterans, and it's $104,000, $104,143. So it equates to about $513 per veteran. Average value of the automobile in that program is $13,500. So that's good stuff.
Anything else? Thank you, Mr. Knuckles, I appreciate it.
I'll be here for the rest of the afternoon, so if we have more fun questions.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you all, very much.
Appreciate it.
Mayor, Mr. Patrick comes forward. Moving into the afternoon presentations, this next one, structuring tax relief, City Council's tax levers. What's clear from Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of City Council is a conversation around tax relief and what that can look like. And so with this presentation, what we want to do is, we've given you these nifty cards that kind of give you a value of a penny and some other percentages. What Greg and Donna will do is kind of walk us through those. At the end of the presentation, I'll kind of read these questions to kind of help you maybe prompt your thoughts as you, as you listen to both Greg and Donna. The questions themselves, and they're not perfect, but it's just conversation starters, is which classification of taxpayer needs the tax relief the most? We hear inflation being extraordinary and the impacts on not simply eggs, but just other gas and what have you over the last several months, to include at least years. And then another question is, what classification of taxpayers need tax relief the least? And thinking about how the two balance with one another. And then kind of the last one, and again, these are not perfect. Would you substitute a higher tax rate in one area for a lower tax rate in another? Because getting into the final presentation of the day, conversation around how to structure tax relief and the variables, the levers, if you will, because what I'll point out with any lever, if you move it up or down, it's the, it's the amount of then effort to expend, if it's down, then back up, or up, then down. And I'd be remiss if I didn't associate that, those movements with politics and what that may mean. We're going to get into the last, the bottom half of the afternoon. We'll show you year-to-date from 1984, kind of where real estate rates have been and what they have averaged, and where we've raised and/or lowered tax rates, and what that has meant for our city historically. So this is to kind of help you think through the different levers, if you will, and the taxes, and give you values associated with them. And then kind of have us think through the questions about just exactly who is it that we're trying to help? And then transition to the final kind of conversation of the day, which is to say, we've tried to our best, think about a resident-focused relief proposal, a business relief proposal. And then the last one, Marjett, thank you, just using LYH kind of relief proposal as opportunity. So with that, Madam Mayor, if it's okay, I'll turn it over to Mr. Patrick and Ms. Whit.
One thing, you mentioned, you're thinking about these questions. So when I read these questions, which classification of taxpayers?
Are you referring to just these four up here, or are you referring to different demographics?
We're open to the demographics. Just for this presentation, we're using just the broad, broad interpretations.
Before, the citizen, business, visitors, and real property owners?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yep.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. Hope you had a good lunch, and look forward to the rest of the retreat this afternoon. As the manager mentioned, a brief overview of what we'll discuss today in this presentation. Who are taxpayers, some of the levers and the revenue rules of thumb, and then some discussion questions. So who are taxpayers? And these are not the right answers. These are examples of a classification system that we can use to help have a conversation around tax relief. But the way we looked at it, to make it as simple as possible, citizens, businesses, visitors, real property owners, a couple of important items. Some taxpayers fall into more than one group. So residents who are homeowners are going to fall into two groups. Businesses that own the real property that their business takes, is on are going to fall into two different groups. And then kind of a little bit more nuanced, but meals tax or food and beverage, transient occupancy, or hotel tax, amusement tax, tobacco tax, these are taxes that are paid by whoever purchases the item or the service. And then they're held in trust by the businesses who remit them on behalf of the payers to the government. So from this standpoint, we don't consider the businesses that collect meals tax to be a payer of meals tax. It is the resident or the visitor that actually purchased the meal that's the payer of that, of that tax. Next slide here, your revenue rules of thumb and your handy-dandy credit card, tax rate credit card. This is a, this is a tool that hopefully you'll, you can keep with you and will come in handy when having discussions with your constituents. But if...
Greg said handy-dandy tax credit card. You cannot purchase anything with this laminated base or so. So just want to make sure, do not try to use that later today.
We meant to put handy-dandy tax rate credit card on the back, but we didn't quite make it in time. And it just is a laminated version of the slide that you see here. It is all of the major taxes that City Council has, has control over, what the rates are. If we're looking at, you know, an increase or a decrease of that tax, what is the basis of that change? And then finally, what's the value of that potential change? So we hope this is helpful to you not only today, but in the future. The next section of the presentation is, we are going to go through each of the taxes that are on the, on the handout, and just give you some additional information there. Some of these, some of the taxes, like real estate tax, it's going to be really straightforward. Everyone's going to have a really good understanding of how it works. Some of the other taxes or fees, like the electric utility tax, is going to be far more complicated. There are three rates that different classifications of taxpayers might pay there that are all very math-intensive. So we'll go, we'll go through that. So first, real estate tax, and all of the taxes are going to have the same information. Everyone knows this is $1.11. We generate $83 million of revenue from a real estate tax. Taxpayers are the real property owners. 30,500 people roughly pay this tax. And a one cent increment, up or down, will generate $750,000 in additional revenue or relief. So that's real estate tax. And I would encourage you through this presentation, if you do have questions on the individual taxes, let's go ahead and address them as we're going through them. I think that'll be a little bit...
I've got one for clarity. When you say tax accounts, is it 30,000 or 40,000? That's not exactly accurate, so it could be a business, it could be...
Correct. That's, that's much cleaner language, thank you.
All right.
Next, personal property tax. And you can see, well, I didn't mention it, there is a definition of the tax up top. Personal property tax is far and away the most kind of complicated to try to describe. There are, there are two rates. There's a general rate of $3.80. This is what you pay on, an individual would pay on a car, or a business would pay on their business personal property. And there is a $3 rate, this is what businesses would pay on machinery and tools that are used in the productions of goods or service. And that is based on a per $100 of assessed value, generate about 20, a little over $23 million in revenue. Citizens, businesses are the payers. 39, there are 39, about 39 and a half thousand accounts. So businesses and families, individuals. If we look at a 10, 10-cent increment, that would generate $610,000 per increment.
I've got a question. On that, on that, on that tax account, do one account include multiple vehicles? So the same thing applies when you go back and you look at the property, can you go back on the real estate?
No, it's one parcel per account.
One parcel per account on real estate?
You're right, on the, on personal property, it can be multiple vehicles, trailers, boats, whatever.
So we've got, so, and I'm just trying to be clear on this, go back to the real estate one. So we've got 30,463 real estate tax accounts, but we have 32,188 parcels. Is the delta there exempt properties?
Sir, would you say that again? I'm sorry.
We have 32,188 parcels. We have 30,463 tax accounts. That's a delta of about 1,800 parcels that aren't accounted for in the tax accounts. So the question is, those 1,800, are those the exempt properties, the people that aren't paying real estate tax?
Most likely, but we'll confirm that. Motor vehicle license fee. This is a fee that is paid to license any vehicle. If you own a vehicle that is worth less than $1,000, it is the only fee that you pay when you, when you license your vehicle, because you don't pay personal property tax on a vehicle worth less than $1,000. I think I have that right, Ms. Rogers. There are other rates for smaller classifications, I think motorcycles and trailers, depending on the size of the trailer. But these are your primary rates that you pay. $29.50 for a normal car like I would own. $34.50 is for heavier, heavier vehicles. We generate about $1,500 plus in revenue. Taxpayers are citizens and businesses. 57,500 tax accounts, and I believe this would align with the definition of tax accounts we use for personal property. If we look at a $5 increment, it's $250,000 up or down. Meals tax, food and beverage tax, this is an additional 6.5% tax paid on prepared food. Prepared food or hot food, this can be paid at a restaurant, it can be paid at a grocery store, it can be paid at a convenience store. If it is prepared food, it's the additional tax that is paid. Visitors, citizens, businesses pay the tax. If we look at a 1% increment, generates a little bit more than $30 million.
Before, you mentioned, you brought the idea of moving this from fast food restaurants. Is that viable? And if it is, how would that be done? And what would be the fiscal impact? If you don't know that now, that's fine, but it's a question I would have.
As to the fiscal impact, I don't think we know. As to the legality of it, I defer to the City Attorney.
So the issue with taxation is it has to be done by permissible classes. So I guess the big question in doing something like that would be is if it's lawfully permissible in some way to classify fast food restaurants or fast in some way to classify fast food restaurants or fast food services different than other restaurants for meals tax purposes. But we can look into that.
Yeah? Lodging tax or hotel tax, this is a tax paid on the price of an accommodation. We generate about, a little bit more than $3.5 million of revenue, primarily paid by visitors. Obviously, there's some residents that might stay in a local hotel. There's businesses that would, that may book business travelers in a local hotel, but it's primarily paid by visitors. Tax accounts, I have, we have NA here because, again, it's paid by the person or the entity that's purchasing the accommodation, not necessarily by the hotel. A 1% increment gets you about $560,000 in revenue or savings. Bed tax, a type of transient occupancy tax. It is a flat fee paid on an accommodation per room night. Revenue, we generate $350,000 of revenue a year. Nice thing about the calculation here is it's pretty simple to understand then how many room nights of hotel stays we generate in the city each year, which would be about 350,000. Primarily paid by visitors. Again, same comment on the tax accounts, a $1.00 increment gets you $350,000. Again, that $1.00 is all that's assessed through the bed tax currently. Amusement tax, this is a tax paid on tickets that we buy to shows or athletic events primarily. Tax rate is 7%. We generate $850,000 of revenue. Citizens and visitors are going to pay this tax primarily. A 1% increment gets you $120,000 in revenue or savings. Tobacco tax, we charge a 35 cent tobacco tax on a pack of 20 cigarettes. If you're to look this up on the code, the tax is actually assessed per cigarette. So you have to do a little bit of math to get to the 35 cents. That is a relic of days gone by. Generate about $800,000 of revenue per year. Citizens and visitors are going to pay it. Increment of 5 cent per pack would generate about $110,000 of revenue. What I would tell you on tobacco tax is, this is the one true sin tax that we have in the city, in the budget, in that it is a tax that can be used to kind of bluntly moderate behavior. It is also a tax that when you raise it, you will generate additional revenue. But that revenue begins to trickle off as time goes by and people's behavior moderates. So the higher this tax is, in the short run, you'll generate more revenue. But in the longer run, either people will use less tobacco or they will go elsewhere and buy their tobacco, which means using it as a tool to generate additional revenue is not a good long-term solution.
Is that on units of tobacco or cigarettes specifically?
I'll defer to Don.
Cigars, essentially.
I think...
Versus cigarettes.
I don't think it includes vape serum, but I believe it does include cigars. And at one point, they were trying to add smokeless tobacco. So I'm not 100% sure.
No big deal. I was just kind of curious.
We can find, we can confirm that answer for you.
We can go up the street and ask.
Yeah. Business, professional, and occupational license tax. It's a tax on the grocery receipts of a business. There's multiple tax rates depending on the type of business. There's actually, I think, one more tax rate on wholesalers that we don't have up here. This generates about $10,500 of revenue annually, paid by businesses, about 1,800 tax accounts. If we look at an increment of 10% of B-Pole, and there's a lot of variability in how you might implement that, whether it's just a 10% reduction in the rates, whether it is a raising the floor on which businesses would pay this tax to the extent that it generates a 10% savings. There's a number of ways to look at it, but the 10% savings on B-Pole would generate about $1 million up or down. Consumer utility tax, electricity. I got to be honest, I didn't know much about this when we started putting this together. It is like a number of relationships, it's complicated. If you look down at the bottom of the slide here, you will see the calculation or the rate that is charged. It's different for residential customers, consumer customers, industrial customers. It is collected by the power company and remitted to the city. It generates about $3.5 million worth of revenue. In terms of tax accounts, we don't really know. That's remitted through Apco to us. Increment, we would say it's maintain or eliminate. We need to dig a little bit deeper to see if there is an option in the middle, but as of now, we're not certain that there is. Generates about $3.5 million in savings up or down. To add context, my last electric bill or my first electric bill was surprisingly, very surprisingly, about 300 bucks, and I paid a little over $7.00 of tax on that bill.
The theorized age for those $600, that used to be 300, that's ostensibly doubled or even more than that?
It would be more. We'd have to follow the...
Right, right. Given all the madness we're seeing with utility bills right now, obviously, if you have a large utility bill with AP, you're going to be paying significantly more than $5 to $15.
Absolutely. And to give you context there, working with, talking with Tim Mitchell, our water resources director, to give you an idea of the impact of updated electric rates, we used to spend about $60,000 a month on electricity at the Water Resources Recovery Plant. That number's up to about $110,000 a month at this point. I'll have to confirm that, but I believe as an enterprise, they would, would they be subject to that tax?
I don't think so.
No, but just, it's not based on the total charge of the bill. It is based on kilowatt hours.
Usage. Yeah. Right. Thank you.
Thanks.
A very similar tax here on, this is on gas as opposed to electricity. You could see the basis for the tax is a CCF or a centum cubic foot, which is a measure of gas. I had to look that up before this presentation. And again, it's one where we would probably look at either leaving or just eliminating generally. Refuse collection. Refuse collection fee is about $10, well, about, it's $10.00 a month. We generate about $2.6 million of revenue per year. This is paid by citizens. Didn't get the number of tax accounts in time, but I think someone here may have that for us to put in the presentation. Again, we would look at either maintaining or eliminating the fee most likely at this point. And I can tell you, it's $120.00 a year that it would save residents if this fee were to go away.
Just by remember, it's somewhere around 22,000, probably the number. Works out to about that. And obviously, you could do the increments in a dollar fashion. And so $1.00 would equal 264 if you wanted to put on there, since it's 10 bucks a month.
And it is, well, and it is residential, so apartment complexes, four units and over are not included. So that's why it's not one-to-one parcels.
I mean, a question that, Don, that, I know some town hall developments in the city have, I think, one meter coming in and then it splits to 10, 20, 30 different units. How would that play into this?
That they're not, they're not part of our refuse system.
Right. Okay.
If I remember correctly, some of the newer developments in the neighborhood, Winter, private, private.
I know Winters is predominantly private. There's like one street that has, we do pick up refuse, Paulette Circle, we do refuse.
If I may, Madam Mayor, it's changed over time. It used to be more private. It's not so much anymore. But my little development, yes, Paulette, no, and it's, so it's changed over time.
This is a table that just breaks down all of those taxes by who the taxpayers would be, just for additional context. And again, the city manager mentioned a couple of discussion questions. Not perfect questions, but we wanted to give you guys some context to start thinking through your conversation here and leading into the next presentation. Madam Mayor.
Mr. Patrick, any other questions?
Congressman Haglund.
I guess no questions, but answering the back questions, you know, which classification of taxpayers need relief the most? To me, that's pretty easy, and I think this kind of shows it fairly clearly. It is our real property owners and our businesses. Our real property owners, our businesses, and citizens. That's the first thing, because I think what we can do is, once you start lowering that, we'll start augmenting our previous discussion about the counties, where we can actually be competitive, where we can actually increase our values of property and allow businesses to flourish here. The B-Pole looks to me like a fairly easy one, especially in light of the fact that most of their cost of goods sold have increased 10, 20, 50%. Post goes up double the cost, and now they're hit with the prices because of the grocery receipts tax. And so with that, had nothing to do with their profits, had nothing to do with anything. I think that's actually not just, do they need it the most or not, which is, I think, kind of questionable. I think the actual thing would be to say, what should we do as a prospective fiscal policy that's actually going to incentivize growth? And so if you actually say, hey, we're going to lower the rates on real property owners and businesses so businesses can flourish, well, flourish, and property owners can flourish, I think that's the best. Whether the need is there or not, that could be anecdotal, if somebody's a single mother or somebody's paid off their mortgage. I mean, those are, you can't dissect and say, hey, we're only going to give it to these people who own the property. Secondly, which classification of taxpayers need relief the least? That's another easy one. Visitors and spenders of choice. So when we look at, I think Lynchburg's got somewhere around 50,000 people that come to work in Lynchburg every day, that don't live in the city. Is that about right?
About 70% of the workforce comes from outside.
Comes from outside. Most people don't pack a, you know, like the olden days, like my dad used to do, pack a little sandwich box anymore. So you bring your sandwich. You go eat. Great. The meals tax, I recognize it's high. I don't want it any higher, but those are where we can capture some of the revenue of those 70% of the people that come from outside of the area to work and go eat lunch. Fantastic. Great. Now that can help them pay for, they can help pay for our roads and our fire and our police. That one's good for visitors. Same thing with the other ones of choice, like going to the theater and the choice of, you know, what were some of the other, lodging? Those are all visitors. I think those are fairly easy. Now, the last question you had, would you substitute? The problem is, I mean, in normal cases, and in maybe five years from now, once we actually start getting a handle on the tax rates and start lowering them, then maybe we can offset. Currently, I mean, we're the highest on about everything, so I don't know how I'd want to offset one with another. I wouldn't want to say, hey, let's lower this so we can raise our meals tax more. I mean, we're already pretty high in the meals tax. We're way too high in the real estate tax. So the last question, I think the problem isn't just offsetting, lowering one tax in order to increase another tax, because most all of them are probably way too high right now. But once we get spending under control, and then maybe in five or 10 years, we can kind of look and say, maybe there's a point to augment some of the taxes with one for another. But definitely not today.
Interesting observations. I totally agree with number two, which classification of taxpayers need relief the least. And I like how you phrased it, Jeff, the choice option. I think in my perfect world, there would be no income tax, no property tax, and it would just be a flat sales tax across the board for everything and just call it square. I think that's the fairest thing you could do, but be that as it may, that's not the system we have. I do somewhat disagree with which tax, not with the question, but what was offered so far, just for conversation's sake. Which classification of taxpayers need relief the most? And I would just, more for the conversation, are non-real property owners not deserving of relief? It's something to work through. I don't necessarily subscribe to that. I think looking at where the majority of growth in the district I represent is, it's an apartment and rental property owner, folks. So that's something I want to be careful of, but I understand the logic and the presentation of it. And then thirdly, would you substitute a higher tax rate in one area to lower one in another? I understand, again, the logic, I think, the logic of, let's wait some time, let's make sure we know things play out. However, that's partially why I wanted to get here today before enacting fiscal policy that could impact us by millions and millions of dollars, one way or the other, even though I fundamentally believe we need to get a good bit of this, a big bulk of it, back to our taxpayers. So with that in mind, understanding, I kind of would want just a flat 30% sales. Yeah, I would substitute one, higher one for a lower one, if it means no net gain, no net increase for the taxpayer. And I think the terminology is critical. Was there a tax rate increase in real estate a couple of years ago? No, but there was a tax increase still. And that's why I'm just trying to be very particular with my words. So if it meant offsetting one and producing another to make sure we're in a niche area to make sure that our taxes, not so much revenues, our taxes are going to the proper areas, I'd be interested in exploring that. The logic behind it tells me that if, barring major shift right now, gas is not going to go down to 215, I mean, for a while. Sure, the Fed might tamp down inflation, but does it take us back to where we were? I don't think so. And so if that's going to happen, the hamburger is still going to be $5.00 as opposed to one. Or the gas tank is still going to be what it is going to be. Therefore, those rates need to be adjusted if we want to offer relief. And so that's why I'm willing to do the offset and say, I'm going to send that money back to folks. So I, not dismissing what was just offered, just more, let's have a conversation about it. And that's kind of where I fall on those three questions. I'd be happy to answer any questions on what I shared, but I do thank you for the presentation.
I have a couple of questions. I believe somewhere I read, I think, what we have 48% of the city are homeowners and about 52% are renters. Is that correct?
It's close.
About right? Okay. And then do we have anything, does anybody have anything handy about homeowners versus personal property owners, specifically car owners? Do we have that statistic handy? Like the number, like the percentage of homeowners versus people who own vehicles? Paying taxes on personal property versus real estate tax?
More people own vehicles.
Yeah, okay.
Vehicles and cars? I usually call them the same. Vehicles and cars? I'm sorry. Vehicles and houses.
More people own vehicles than houses.
Yeah, yeah, okay. But we just don't have the percentage, but we know it's...
Yeah, we have the tax accounts, which are imperfect measure. So, you know, 30 and a half thousand parcels pay tax and 39 odd thousand accounts for personal property tax, which is both business and individual. So there's a, that's roughly right without being exactly right.
Right. I guess the conversations I'm having and being stopped by people in the grocery stores and so forth are people that fall into all the categories. They are everyday people that are paying $8.00 for a dozen eggs. Everybody that has, lives on a budget regardless of income level are struggling to pay bills and grocery bills and put gas in their vehicles. So looking at the long term of how we can help kind of everybody in the city, regardless of how they live, if they rent or they own, in the long term, I'm looking at these questions and kind of considering that. I did have a friend of mine that owns a business ask a question, so I did want to ask about the B-Pole. a question, so I did want to ask about the B-pole thing. So it looks like right now, or at least how it was positioned to me, was he felt like, because he does successful in his business, the way that we currently do the business license or the tax, he feels like he's being punished, in a sense, for how much better he does, he gets taxed higher. Have there been conversations about maybe changing how we do that, or doing more of a flat fee tax, or have we done that in the past? Has that changed historically? Can you comment on that?
Well, it's a gross receipts tax.
Okay.
So it's a tax that's assessed on the gross receipts of a business.
Right.
Now, like where we've eliminated the tax on the first, the 150,000 and less, it's no longer the business license. I mean, those things can be done, but I think if you have the tax, if you have the tax on what's above that, you have to assess it at a rate. It doesn't have to be the rate we're at, but it has to be a rate against gross receipts.
Okay.
Hope I answered your question.
Yes, I just wanted to make sure I asked it, and then had a better understanding of it. Thank you.
Things going to work as soon as Mitch is done talking.
Councilman Hagelson?
Well, I love the ground and subject, I just wanted to ask.
One more question about that. So is that, that rate is state set? Is the rate state set, or the way it's calculated is state set?
It is, the maximum is set.
Oh, the maximum, okay.
And in the 70s, a long time ago, the maximum rates were set. Every locality in Virginia, for the most part, was above what was the new maximum rates. And localities were given eight years to roll the rates back to the new maximums. And I think that ran out in the middle 80s, is when you had the, at the new maximums. And the majority of localities that had the B-pole tax at the time, like Lynchburg, they set at the new maximum and took the eight years to roll back to that new maximum, which, again, the rates were set in the 70s. So, I mean, we're talking 50 years ago. These rates were set on profit ratios of retailers, contractors, business services, professional services. So, yeah, does it need to be looked at? Certainly, but the state has not done that, and most localities have left it there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Hagelson?
Regarding this conversation, so a couple of things where I, you know, maybe, some of our tax policy actually leads us to some good, or bad, or different city policy. So granted, there may be more people that have cars than houses, okay? 39,000 versus 30,000, or maybe there's a few more trucks and whatever to get to the 57,000. But when you think about, how does somebody build wealth? How do you get out of poverty? By having expensive cars that depreciate every day, and every year, or every mile, and every time the tires turn? Or does wealth built and established when you actually get equity in your house? So those are things that I think are much more critical than a depreciating asset, a car. You have something, I've known people that I've met on the campaign for 20 years, they paid more in taxes than they've ever paid for their house. They bought their house in the 60s, you know, for 10 grand. Well, guess what? They're paying more and more every year for that real estate. And just in the taxes now. And so that is why it's different. Secondly, I know we talk about saying, oh, well, a renter doesn't get any tax relief. When a property owner, when an apartment owner, has a huge increase in their tax bill, you think they just eat it? Or do they actually pass that on, just like a cost of goods sold, to any other business? When your costs go up, you pass that on to your customer. In this case, the person who owns the apartment complex passes that on through an increased rent to their tenant. So I recognize, you know, sometimes we like to think, who gets it today, or whatnot. So again, I think we want to look at tax policy, and how does it really help our city? I think, and Strohling said earlier, about homeownership. I mean, that's actually a pretty good thing. I mean, when you have people that actually own property, and they're your neighbor, they usually keep their lawn mowed, and they don't keep pigeons from flying in the attic and everything, like I have seen. So when the people that actually own it are actually benefiting, that's a good thing. And so incentivizing ownership, I think, is a fantastic thing. And what better way than actually saying, hey, let's lower your real estate taxes? And these aren't, quite frankly, we're not even to the point of lowering them yet. In my 20 years, it'd be interesting to look at what the real estate taxes were 20 years ago versus today. I bet there are probably 20 million. Now they're like, what, 60? Jeff Andy's already left, 60, 70, 80?
83.
83, yeah, okay. So, I mean, they've, it's not like we're dropping it back to, you know, 20 million or something. So they keep on increasing, so the more that we can either offset that, so the property values can increase, just like we've seen in Forrest, just like we've seen in Campbell County, just like we've seen in our other localities. I think that's a better way, not just from the immediate taxes, but what helps us move forward as a city.
Councilman Missions?
Yeah, so, a couple of things on this. So can you go back a slide? I've got a real issue with this slide. And the issue that I have with this slide is that on that top row, there should be an X in every column. Because who are our real property owners? And why are we pushing them off to the side like they're something different? You know, like, is this like a tax to wealthy kind of thing? Or, I'm just saying, you know, it's, that bothers me. I just wanted to point that out, because our citizens, our visitors, and our businesses own the properties in the city. And what did we say was the number, the percentage of renters? Around 50%?
52.
Well, the interesting thing is, and I was talking to Jeff earlier about the GIS, and I pulled all the parcels on a spreadsheet while we were sitting here. Roughly 80 percent of the mailing addresses are in the city. So if we're going to talk about these things, let's actually talk about who these people really are, right? So we can get the data to determine who are our citizens that own properties, that may own multiple properties, but we shouldn't be demonizing our real property owners, because maybe they're out of state or whatever, because it's not as many as is being portrayed. So I found that kind of interesting. And then also, when you look at that, our businesses are a huge component of our real property owners, right? And if we want to give people relief, we need to give relief to our individuals, families, and businesses in the city. And our businesses are going to help create jobs, right? They're going to invest more into the city when they have more resources to do so. So I just wanted to point out that I've got some, just some issues with that slide, that we wouldn't put an X in every column, because our real property owners include all of those people. And going back to, I think Jeff just mentioned about people's real estate taxes being the highest they've ever been, that you talked to on the campaign trail. Is that right, Jeff? So, I live in a different neighborhood that was annexed in 1976. I hear it all the time. Because those folks, I've got neighbors that used to live in Campbell County, right? And all they've ever seen is their real estate taxes skyrocket. And you know what they were promised in 1976? Sidewalks, streetlights, curb and gutter. And what has government done? Raised their taxes and never delivered on the promises. So let's just lower the taxes, the real estate taxes, and let's stop taking these unnecessary tax increases from two years ago from our citizens. That's what we need to do.
Councilman, oh, yeah, sorry.
I can just make it that, for reason, we didn't put X's in citizens and businesses, because not every citizen owns real property, not every business owns real property. Some businesses rent the property that, where their business is located. So that's the reason we created that separately, because not, it didn't fit to all.
But not every citizen owns personal property.
Not every citizen has tobacco tax.
Not every citizen buys tobacco.
I mean...
And not every citizen pays B-pole, because if they're under 150,000, they're not paying it, right? So, I mean, it really just looks to me like it's an attempt to throw real property owners off to the side, like they've got to be classified differently than anybody else, where the reality is, is real property owners are citizens, visitors, and businesses, because we have real property owners that invest in real estate in the city, that also come back and visit the city, and spend money on meals tax, and spend money on lodging, and do all of those things. You know, I've got a couple of homes in my neighborhood that were bought by Liberty University parents for their kids, right, out of state. They lived there. And, you know, let's think about that, too. How many of those properties exist that might have a mailing address out of state, but they're actually being occupied by somebody who's here contributing to our economy? And they're choosing, their parents are choosing to spend a ton of money in our city, our locality, to send their kids to school here. And we're not capturing that. We don't see that. But they're coming back in, and they're still owning that property after their kids graduate, and they're holding on to it, and they're continuing to rent it out, or eventually sell it. And one of the beautiful things that I've seen about that is the amount of money that these families from out of state, from Liberty University, are putting into these homes to rehab them and make them really, really nice, and to really improve the property value in our city that way. So, I mean, I just, I just wanted to point out that I don't like that citizens, visitors, and businesses all pay real estate tax. They don't all pay it, but real property owners include all those, and it just bothered me that that was like that.
Mr. Pedron?
Councilman Missions, I appreciate the sentiment. I can promise you, this was not done in an attempt to mislead in any way. There's a lot of nuance to this, and in order to present it effectively, it is hard to go into all of that nuance. We'd be here for a month of Sundays doing it. So this is really, you know, I think one of the first slides kind of delineated the fact that not all residents own real property, and not all real property owners are residents. And that's really the reason it's in there, just to make sure that, you know, we're able to provide meaningful summary information that you guys can use to have an effective conversation. So that's the intent of the slide.
And what it is, is I just don't want to take away from the fact that there are single moms out there paying real estate tax, and making decisions on whether or not to buy groceries or pay their electric bill right now.
Yeah, absolutely.
Not easy. Councilman Wilder?
Yes, thank you for the information. I appreciate it. And again, in past times, during budget discussions, we were sometimes asked that, to kind of give us a breakdown. I think, especially Councilman Nelson, would always mention about persons coming into the city, that they're receiving a lot of the benefits. You don't want to make sure they're kind of, not really paying that share, but paying a portion of the expenses for the city. So like meals tax, or capture, things like that, lodging tax. So we kind of had discussions about that in the past, about that. So I understand the slides, I appreciate it. I appreciate all the information, because it really gives you a great breakdown of the taxes, the different categories, and the different fees. You know, again, going back to my discussion with the neighbors in Diamond Hill on Tuesday, you know, the big thing is, again, as I mentioned, they gave a long list. I'm telling you, a long list, a long list of items they want done. But again, if I were to ask them, do you want to lower taxes, or do you want this information, this stuff done? It's got to be more discussion. Because a lot of times, they still want these same services, but then nobody wants to pay higher taxes. But again, so we had to have some kind of discussions with our citizens, you know, what do you, that last question that you asked, would you substitute a higher tax rate in one area for a lower tax rate in another? They're going to say, oh, I'd rather pay lower tax, but they don't want, they're going with the same services. And then you're going, they're going to give you, and one of the most calls I get is usually when, thank God, we got those new trash trucks. I haven't got any lately, but before we got the new, whatever it's called, the new trash thing, they, I would get calls every week about trash, when anything else, about my trash wasn't picked up, my trash was two hours late. I get calls about that. So again, they want those services, they want the roads fixed, they want the lights on, they want the sidewalks, they want all these things. But again, if you're going to not pay for them, you're going to have unfortunately suffer some consequences. So we've got to make sure everyone understands that it's not going to be enough funds to do all the things you want done, and also then have a great quality of life. You know, be able to do other trails, be able to have the parks, be able to have extended hours in our swimming pool during the summer, when some kids, well, not some kids, a lot of people can't go to our private pool, or our country club, or something like that. They can go to the city, city location, Miller Park, then we get extra hours, and had to get more lifecards, and pay higher wages to get lifecards, because it's hard to get lifecards during this time period. So there's so many consequences we've got to continue to think about, and think about the future of what the citizens really want in our community. Thank you.
You know, when I was a single mother and lived with my mom, I had to figure out how to pay for childcare each month, and putting gas in my car. I wasn't able to think about buying a house. So I'm trying to figure out how the 52 percent of the city thinks, and the 48 percent of the city thinks, and try to think of the whole picture. So I appreciate all these slides, and what it makes us all think about. So, thank you so much. Anybody else? Yes, Councilman Hagelson?
Just on a lighter note, with that last question, as Councilmember Wilder was saying, would you substitute a higher tax rate in one area for a lower tax rate in another? So I would substitute a higher tax rate in Charlottesville for a lower tax rate in Lynchburg.
They've done it.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. I think we have a break scheduled here?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I propose a five-minute break.
Okay.
And then we got hot off the press. Carrie's going to come around and put in your notebooks the last presentation, or the physical copy of the last presentation.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
We'll take a break. Thank you so much. Okay, we are back from break. Mr. Bendah?
Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, first off, I'd like to say thank you. I know that it's been a long, long day with dense, not, Councilman Hagelson wondered what the definition of dense is. This is heavy laden information, and so I commend each of you on time spent, and I hope it's been time well spent. I want to also commend the three new City Council people. Again, I have a bone to pick with the state, and when I see the state, which is obviously not something tangible, I'm going to talk to them about changing elections from May to November. I think, again, we would have had much more time to get to understand the city and how it works, if you were here in July, as opposed to January. So again, for the three newest members, well done. You've hit the ground running, and I hope that if anything, we've been able to support you well, give you the information that you need. Because no sooner have you arrived, we've jumped in both feet fully into the budget process. And speaking of that process, just know that fiscal '24 budget process itself began well before today. And so just before we left for holiday, we met with 26 different departments and constitutional officers about their budgets. We subsequently met with each of you one-on-one, and talked about what's a priority. And so today, we've been leaning very heavily into tax relief, and how and what that looks like, and how it is accomplished, and this presentation will look at that. But I will remind you of other things that you have positioned with me and for me, even prior to many of your arrivals on council, at least three of you. When I arrived about a year and a half ago, the city was wrestling with compression. And what I heard acutely from that council was to do something to impact it. And we started that just over a year ago. Percentage or salaries, what have you, had lagged. You're going to see in this presentation, kind of, I think, Councilman Hagelson talked about, I'd like to see a reflection on 30 years of real estate rates. You'll see those. You'll see in '08, the rate itself was reduced, and then subsequent to that, in 2013, was raised back to $1.11, went to $1.5, and then to $1.11. In that time, you saw that Moody's, or, excuse me, Moody Fitch and Standard Emporors kind of reflection on that time period gave us, you saw that there were furloughs, there were layoffs, there were reductions, there were different things. And we can give you a compensation component, and that many of those years, they were maybe even flat to no increase, and also just a general bonus that was given, which created the component called compression. And then looking at, I know of a particular import, it's public safety. And we started this last year with investments in each, and I know that we want to continue those, because it's of import to our city. But I noticed that, just even in this conversation today, that I think it was Vice Mayor Faraldi that brought up Tyriana, and the expectation on how and what that would look like. And we gave, there's at least eight neighborhood plans, Tyriana, don't have a number, but we have to get sewer water and other things to make it a viable place to consider for single-family residential development. I think it was Mr. Missions that talked about, Councilmember Missions, that talked about annexation, and investment in promises that were made to adjacent land that became our own, as to services that were provided. This last year, you started that, in Richmond Hills, considering putting out sewer water out there to that. If you have picked up or noticed the paper in the last couple of weeks, I think the number that schools have as a capital investment is 100 million. That certainly sobered me. Today's paper talks about, you know, percentages as it relates to five, and I can't remember exactly what they say, 5 and 50, or there's a... exactly what they say, five and 50, or there's a, there's a model they have as to pay, pay teachers and if we remember, schools don't have a taxing ability and so that comes back and it's laid before you and your peers as far as that goes. And then paying attention to my own workforce, albeit that 70 come from outside, they're still impacted where they live and that they too are paying for the same eggs and paying for the same gas and paying for the same equipment that they either drive in or are a part of. And then just to do business, just in itself, the cost of aggregate, cost of water, cost of different, cost of the chemicals that help water, make, keep water clean. So, the expenses that are associated to our society, our city, we are not immune from. We have to pay those as well. And what we, those projects, I think it was Davenport who was here was talking just generally about what it takes to build something and what we borrowed. I can tell you, each project has gone up on expenses associated because, well, supply, demand, chain and other things. So, those are all things that we contemplate. And then considering the budget process itself, the onus is on me to propose one. And so, interesting here, I'm trying to get reflections from each of you about what's of import and I have to marry your desires with the residents, with other things that, and I will at some point propose a budget. But helpful, helpful for me today is to understand tax relief and what that looks like and who is it, who should it be associated with? And with that, I want to make sure that in that scales as we begin to balance those, the other things that you want to accomplish as a city. And so, with that, today, this presentation, Greg will walk you through just kind of an understanding of where we've been, what things have looked like and then propose different options. We looked at residents, we looked at businesses and we looked at kind of the city as a whole. And bottom line upfront, we used 9 million. It's imperfect, it's associated, we took roughly 12 pennies and did the math against $750,000, so each was 9 million, okay? Now, again, just a starting point, it could be less or more depending on, again, what are the other priorities? And I'll remind you that you are, or at least the priorities that I've understood them have been public safety, infrastructure, economic development, quality of life and lifelong learning. And remember, we reflected on core service and how those are maybe modeled under some of those. And so, what are the things that we want to accomplish in there? And so, as we move into this, I really, again, want to thank you for your participation today. I hope, again, it's been robust, good information that I think you, that you, I hope, find helpful. And with that, I turn it to Mr. Patrick.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. This is the last presentation of the day. I don't think I can sit for much longer, so I'm going to stand for this one as we, as we go through it. Thank you for your attention today, I know it's been a long day. I told the manager at the last break, I said, you know, I was worried that we didn't have enough material to fill all the time today. Well, I was, I was wrong, I was, I was definitely wrong there. So, this presentation, the up-down got me again. This presentation, we'll talk a little bit about building the FY 2024 budget, considerations for providing tax relief, a look at some options for focused tax relief that are not recommendations, they are just options to get you guys, to give you some talking points or some, some discussion around tax, tax relief and then, and then looking ahead. So, building the fiscal year 2024 budget, some budget basics. Ongoing expenses should always be supported with ongoing revenue. This is probably the single most important policy around budgeting that we could implement. We have done a great job of doing this, going back for a long time. It is something that Donna and her team have always made sure was happening, but we always want to fund ongoing expenses with ongoing revenues.
I guess when we started today at page nine, that's something that was, I mean, the one, what you had on the other side, the fund balance was other one-time operating expenses. So, hopefully going forward that will apply, but obviously the beginning of our meeting, it was totally the opposite.
So, those were one-time expenses funded with one-time revenue?
No, they're operating, they're compression, exactly. So, I'm referring to.
Okay. Typically, we have done an extremely good job of supporting ongoing expenses with ongoing revenues. Next, and, and especially important for council is that service expectations of, that the service expectations that our residents have need to be aligned with the resources that we have to provide those services. The, the level of service is less important than making sure that we effectively communicate what expectations should be. Budget conservatively, but don't overcharge residents and then always be focused on sustainability. So, always look down the road so we have a good sense of what's, of what's coming. With COVID, obviously, that's not something we could do effectively, but for the most part, if we're looking down the road, we're going to be a lot more effective at making good, good decisions. So, as we look towards building the budget, we've got some headwinds and we've got some tailwinds. I've confused myself as to what is a headwind and what is a tailwind. So, headwinds mean not great, tailwinds mean, these are, these are, these are good things. So, first, the tailwinds, robust real estate reassessments and local revenue, local tax revenue growth. The financial metrics are good, reserve levels are strong, debt affordability metrics are solid. I know in Davenport's presentation, you saw my previous employer on there, but you didn't see it in a per capita manner. And what I can tell you is that in a per capita level and in a overall size of budget level, our metrics are much, much stronger than, than where I, where I came from. Our reserve levels are much stronger and our debt affordability metrics are much, much stronger. So, kudos to council for, for doing such a, a good job in making sure that we are really conservatively and effectively financially run. And then council's recent investments in, in our workforce has, has, has really given us a strong ground to stand on as we look, as we look forward. We've made a lot of the important adjustments already, which will stand us in good stead as we look forward. So, headwinds, inflation, how many of you have heard of inflation? Probably all of you. We are not immune. I, I mentioned the, the, the electric bill at the Water Resources Recovery Plant, gone up almost double over what it was last year. There's, there's, the cost of construction has increased dramatically. We are in a tight labor market, which, which leads to recruiting and retention challenges. Now, things seem to have eased anecdotally, even though unemployment is still at the lowest level in 40 or 50 years. But we have to, we have to compete harder now. We have to be a better organization to work for now. We have to focus on making sure that we are providing a fair wage now, more than we did five years ago, 10 years ago. Organizational capacity, I mentioned to you guys earlier that Donna and her team put the, the budget together, put this presentation together with two budget analysts. That's both extremely impressive and terrifying to me, because that is, that is a level of capacity that works if you have two experienced, high-performing analysts, which Donna has. But if there's any turnover there in Donna or in any of those, those key roles, that becomes a scary proposition. And I use Donna as a proxy for lots of other, lots of other organizational areas. Flat reassessments next cycle. So, keep in mind, we do a biennial reassessment process, which means the growth that we see in this year's reassessment process has to carry us through this fiscal year and next fiscal year. So, in '26 and '27, we look at the next reassessment cycle. If we are being overly optimistic that we are going to see much more than flat growth in that cycle, would be a mistake. So, we have to plan sustainably and, and, and hope that we see better, better than planned growth there. And then you've seen it, you hear it on the news, Chris Chimer has spoken to us about it, a recession on the horizon, we just don't know, but it is a time to think conservatively from that standpoint. So, a framework for success. And, and this is not a budget proposal, though it has some of the hallmarks of them, this is, this is really just a kind of an outline that the city manager is, is thinking of when we're building this budget. Number one, keeping promises, compression adjustments and pay progression. Pay progression and compression adjustments for Lynchburg Fire Department. We want to keep that, that promise in fiscal year 2024. A meaningful wage increase for city employees that, that helps partially mitigate some of the impact of inflation. Organizational investment, especially in public safety, to align with city council's priorities. A commitment to public school education, you know, understanding the local match for the salary increase provided by the state. I, I think the talk in Richmond right now is, is 5% plus another 2%. I'm not sure if that shakes itself out as 7% over the, over two years or if it's 7% in one year, but that, those are the conversations that are happening. You know, schools are, are moving forward with a 50-15 initiative, that's making sure any teacher with a master's degree is earning a minimum of $50,000 a year and making sure they're unclassified staff, but a classified staff, I can't remember what it, what the actual term is, is earning at least $15 an hour. These are not items that council's under any obligation to fund, but it's, it's certainly items that should be part of the, of council's budget discussions. And then providing impactful tax relief for Lynchburg residents and businesses. This is what we would call a, a, the framework for success. Yes, sir?
Did you say that their initiative with that is for teachers with master's degrees?
I believe that's, I believe that is, is how that is structured.
Okay, that's a lot different than the original proposal.
What?
The original proposal.
And we can confirm that. So, considerations when providing tax relief. So, bottom line in 2024, as we all know, won't come to a surprise, won't be a surprise to anyone, we will have more revenue than we need to provide the expected level of services to our residents. We will have more revenue than we need to provide the expected level of services to, to our residents. That said, that said, local government tax relief is typically reactive and it occurs at the end of an economic cycle and we have to be careful and we have to think ahead. Tax relief should not impact the city's business enterprises, those are self-sustaining operations, their revenue supports their expenditures, so tax relief should be focused on the, the general fund and the, the general taxes that the city levies and then a balancing act. And, and this is the real challenge for council. And that is balancing the amount of relief we provide now, future service levels and potentially the need for future tax increases if we don't see sustained revenue growth. Because what we will see for sure is sustained expenditure growth just to provide the level of services that we're providing, providing currently. Three, four days ago, at about 1:30 in the morning, I woke up in bed with the idea for this slide and I got up and I, and I made it. And what this looks like, what's, what this looks at is, we go back to '87, '88 and we look at the biennial reassessment rates for each biennial period. Those are the bars in blue. The line in salmon is the tax rate, the real estate tax rate that has been charged over that, that has been assessed over that 36, 37, 38-year period. And, and what you see is a couple of items of interest. The average biennial reassessment, 9.7%. So, you're looking at about 4.75% per year is what we're seeing over the last 37, 38 years. The average real estate tax rate during that time is actually $1.11.4. So, if you round it, it's $1.11. And, and what's happened over that time is there have been really two periods of divergence from around that $1.11 rate. In the late 80s, early 90s, we were at $1.12 and we went up for a short period of time to $1.16, then $1.18, and then we stair stepped back down to $1.11. That continued on for 10, 12 years. And then you can see, I realize there's this flashlight here, you can see the run-up in assessment growth before the Great Recession. As this happened in 2008, you see this big spike and real estate tax rate went down to $1.05. And this is the fear, this is the real fear. Look at what happened immediately following that. You see the impact of the Great Recession here. Real estate tax assessments and revenue is a lagging indicator. So, it didn't hit us hard in nine or 10, but we really felt the impact in, over the next basically decade up until, you know, 2020, 2019. Council needs to be, when council thinks through tax relief, it's really important to think about what happens, it's doubtful we'll see anything that resembles a Great Recession again, but what will happen if we do turn into an economic downturn?
To bring in a little bit of context to this, because sometimes pictures can paint, you know, whatever you want to paint it. So, looking at those times in the 80s and 90s and then the early 2000, there was a time when there was different services by the city that were covered by those tax rates. So, those tax rates back in the 80s and 90s, I think we had at least 20% of our population was in the Lynchburg City Schools. It was almost 100% of the school-aged kids were using the public schools. Now, we're down to like 9%. Trash was picked up as part of your real estate tax payment, it was part of the fee that you paid and now it's gone to a pay, you know, individuals pay for it. Another item is when you're looking at this 2007, '08 and then this raising the rates back up, you know, sure, there was an element of the recession, but you also got to keep in mind that there was, were two schools that were being funded at that time. An $80 million brand-new heritage that we had to debt finance on top of a $29 million Sandusky Middle that was put on there. And, and so with that, you're looking at another 100 and some million dollars of debt financing, which put that on there. So, and now when I see the word tax relief, when you recognize that the $1.11 rate and the assessments went up 25 and a half percent, that's really not tax relief, it's just not increasing the tax burden on our citizens as much. It's still an increase, right?
Without doing the math, yeah.
I mean, it's, you went up 25% and you dropped it five, six cents, that was still an increase, so.
So, again, the takeaway here is be cognizant of the, the, what comes next, because where we don't want to find ourselves is where the expectations for service and the resources, resources to provide those services are misaligned. So, focused tax relief, the art of the possible, kind of within that framework for success. To the manager's point, we took a look at a number, $9 million of ongoing relief, that's the equivalent of a, of a 12-cent reduction in the real estate tax rate. Continued temporary personal property tax relief, to the extent that the Commissioner of Revenue is, is, is able to make that happen, and I think we'll hear from him on Tuesday. And then we'll go through some options based on, on council priorities. Some of the options we're going to discuss in the next couple of slides are just that. They are opportunities for, for council to kind of discuss priorities, discuss potential path forward for, for tax relief.
So, that 9 million ongoing tax relief, the equivalent of 12-cent reduction in the real estate tax rate, is that a 12-cent reduction from the current rate with the new assessments?
Yes, from $1.11.
So, you're really not looking at 9 million in ongoing tax relief, because the equalization rate is going to be, what did we say the equalization?
92 or 93 cents.
93 cents. So that's actually a tax increase. There's no relief there, right? So what you're trying to sell us on is that we're not going to provide tax relief with what's being proposed here. We're actually going to reduce the tax increase by 9 million, but there will still be a tax increase with a 12 cent reduction.
And, uh, this is council member missions. So in, um, putting the other presentation, um, parallel to the same time that you heard Jeff was putting, finishing things, he even asked a little, for a little bit more time. What I took, um, was kind of the conversation that's been happening around the dais, uh, proposals as to what the decrease in real estate tax rate would be. So I took 12 cents because that seemed to be the highest, um, requested, uh, number. So, um, it wasn't contemplative of what Jeff's number is going to be as far as the equalization. So, um, your point is made, I understand it, but that's where we had to start at something, uh, and we used that arbitrary number, but still a number that had been talked about as 12 cents and use that as the conversation piece for today.
So if, if we're going to cut 9 million off the equalization rate, I'm, I'm good to go with that.
Off of the?
Off the equalization rate, yeah. Absolutely.
So, so keep in mind, uh, i- in, in preparing for, you know, budget development this year, um, we're already looking at, at costs, right? Um, I can tell you that an increase in the revenue we're seeing, these things never happen in a vacuum, right? We're seeing the same on the expenditure side. We're experiencing the inflation that anyone else, that everyone else is experiencing. And these are the, this is the inflation, uh, that, that we are, are seeing to provide the services to the residents that, that we provide. So, uh, with that reality, the reality that we've got a tight labor market, with the reality that, um, we've made some commitments to especially our fire staff this year, um, some of the new revenue that we generate this year, if we're going to maintain the service level that we currently have, if we are going to, uh, make an investment, uh, in our employees to help mitigate the cost of inflation, if we're going to make an investment in our fire rescue staff, um, then, then some of that revenue growth is going to need to stay with the city to, to be spent on, um, city, city services. Um, we can build a budget for less than what amounts to 99 cents on the real estate tax rate, but that's when we, at that point, we get to the point where we are discussing what of those things are we not going to do or what services that we currently, currently provide, are we going to do less of or are we not going to do at all? Um, and, and that's the difficult conversation, um, that we, that will, uh, that we'll need to have if we want to do, uh, tax relief to the extent that it's significantly, um, significantly more than, uh, the, the equi, 9 million, 9, 10 million dollars.
I was just going to ask, I, I think it'd be helpful if we get through the whole conversation and, and then break this open because I know this is going to go a bunch of different directions, but the question I have for you was, you said 9 to 10 million dollars. Is that just the parameters by which city hall is saying that's the warning zone or is it 9 to million dollars, however you get there, varying pots of revenue or tax sources? So that's why I was saying maybe going through the presentations might help, but.
For, absolutely. So for us to be able to function within this framework that we've outlined here, keep, uh, the keeping our promises to fire rescue staff, meaningful wage increase for city employees, uh, organizational investment, especially in public safety, public school education, um, then much more than, than, than the equivalent of a 12 cent tax increase is going to jeopardize that framework.
Can you help me with that? Because that doesn't make sense. So if we have 14, I'm not even getting into 43 million dollar surplus, leftover money, however you want to categorize it, the 60 million, I'm not, just the 14 million dollars of additional revenue. If you take 9 million out of that, you're telling me you still can't accomplish some of those things with, with the five or six left over?
That revenue growth has to pay for all of the inflationary expenses above last year's budget. Uh, it has to pay for the cost of a salary increase for city employees within this, for operating within this framework.
So no, is the answer. It would not.
It would, uh, the $3 million of revenue growth over last year's budget would not allow us to accomplish the, the, the things outlined in this framework. They would allow us to, we can easily produce a balanced budget. The, the question is, what do we not do that's in the, in the framework?
If you kept everything the exact same right now, just didn't make one change from the last budget that was adopted, no change, save for taking 9 million dollars out, and you have a remainder of X dollars in associated revenue. I, I mean, like, just, I want like a very candid answer, like, no, that is not enough to accommodate just the inflationary costs.
The inflationary, we, we'd have to, we're not ready to propose a budget yet.
No, I understand.
So, so.
From, from a, from a average Joe's standpoint, if you kept everything the same and you have 14 million in additional revenue, you take nine out, what's the problem? Everything stays the exact same. That's the perspective that the folks who sent me here to say, you have all this extra money, what's going on?
So that, so that $5 million, what that would, what that would cover, um, without having the data to, to.
Sure, and I understand that. This is more elementary light.
Is basically, we could probably maintain, uh, the service level, uh, that we have right now, right? Uh, it's going to take four, five, six, seven million dollars just to cover the inflationary expenses unrelated to personnel.
Okay, so then, uh, and I understand we're on a budget cut. I'll conclude with this so we can move on with presentation, so I'm not dominating the conversation. I get that, so then why are we continuing to put so much into the unassigned general fund balance and others, other things that we've talked about today, which pull money out of the general fund to accommodate those things? We should pump the brakes on the capital improvement plans to a significant degree, which is partially why I voted against that in the previous budget. We had all that opportunity, use federal money to offset costs to a significant degree and create tax credits to get those dollars to go back to folks and we didn't do it. That's previous debate, but you can see how for me, I'm trying to make that a full picture of if we're putting all this cash into the capital improvement plan and putting it in lock boxes like we did in the previous capital improvement plan, just to hold there, even though there's a tax increase associated with it, why are we doing those things if we can not do that and then just make the cut? And I struggled to see how outside of the inflationary costs, like the power bill, we can't do that. So I'm sorry for dominating, but that, like, that's just the big disconnect for me that I, I just can't wrap my brain around.
So keep in mind that four, five, six million dollars inflationary cost doesn't cover salary increase, doesn't cover, uh, compression for firefighters, doesn't cover any investment that council would want to make above what you're currently making into, um, into the school system. Um, so, so those items would be on top. Um, if we are, if we are looking at working towards generating smaller budgetary surpluses going forward in the operating budget, then we can take, we can do that by taking on additional budgetary risk. And what that would mean was instead of fully funding, uh, personnel budgets, we could set aside, um, we could make an allowance for vacancies, right? So that brings down the level of expenditure in the budget. We could decide that we don't want to include an allowance for uncollectible accounts, which means your, your net revenue level is higher. Um, tho- those are all things within kind of the, the, the budget development world that you can do to maximize the, um, the, how far the operating budget can go. If we make those decisions, then we are putting ourselves at more risk should there be, uh, 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 an economic downturn going forward. Um, and, and they're fine, it's fine to make those decisions, we just all have to be aware that, um, we have added risk, we've added financial risk to the budget. I don't know if that answers your question?
I guess my risk analysis is greater that if that does happen, that I want to make sure that the folks I represent can maybe even remotely pay that 20% increase in property taxes, let alone everything else they need to do for, now that they've lost their job in a recession. Uh, thanks for the conversation. I think that gives you enough intel where I'm coming from for the upcoming budget talks. Um, still not sold about the simple math equation, so I'm looking forward to getting the numbers as we move forward.
But believe, we are way ahead of ourselves, um, in, in terms of the budget process at, at this point. Um, I, I wish we had more detailed information where we could tell you kind of to the dollar where we thought we would be in terms of just, uh, the, the ability to provide, um, a status quo level of service. We will get there, um, and we look forward to having those conversations.
Let's keep going, thank you. Can we just keep going and hold on to questions?
And then I defer.
Okay.
Okay. So with that, you know, and I realize there's lots of different things. And so sometimes you're, you're asking us to also bake the cake. We're not baking the cake. What we're doing, hopefully, as a group of volunteers that are elected to represent the citizens, most citizens said taxes are too high. So if we all say taxes are too high, lower the taxes, then it's incumbent upon the professional management to say, well, we, we could do with, you don't need 120 people in parks and rec, we only need 50, or we only need this. So once we actually set the revenue, then you can come in and say, here are the things we would do, understanding that the revenue is not going to be, because we're not going to have any tax increases by any stretch. We're going to have tax reduction. What are we going to do with that being the case? And so I think that should answer, uh, council member for all these question about, you got this more money with growth? Okay, that's going to be your increase. Not increase in, in, in the taxes, um, whether it be the tax equalization rate or whatnot, that shouldn't be us just sitting here saying, you know, I think it'd be a great thing to have more for schools without having any understanding of the standards of quality. Well, I think it'd be neat to have more and such and such. These are just opinions off the top of our head. We should be saying, here's what we want you to do. We want you to lower the rates. We want you to make sure that there's literally tax relief, just not in, less of an increase in tax that there's been. Then you come up with the budget. I mean, that's.
And so, um, then, uh, what I would recommend is that we don't go through these next few slides. Um, what I, um, it, that's, that is super helpful for me in the respect of, um, again, I go back to the state and I'm, I'm having, you know, I got to figure that out, um, as to when people have started. Because, um, coming in, uh, there was, you know, several different things and I'm trying to figure out how to propose a budget amidst.
A lot of things, absolutely.
A lot of, a lot of things. And so some of this is, um, as a city manager, understanding what it takes to run and what it requires just generally for the city to succeed. And so what I recommend, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of city councils, rather than go through these next few slides, that we do exactly what we do normally, which is to walk through a budget process. So helpful for me today is to understand of import to each one of you is some kind of tax relief, right? And a myriad of other elements that I have heard in our one-on-ones. And so as we go through budget development, so we'll start as early as next Tuesday and, uh, our commissioner will come in and talk to you about personal property, personal property tax relief. Uh, subsequent to that, that's with the 14th. The 28th, um, we'll start in on capital improvement plan and what that looks like. And then in that March timeframe, I'll come in with a proposal. And I expect over the next couple of weeks in these conversations, I'm going to have a better sense of, one, the true numbers, uh, and understand just exactly where to start from so that when I get in front of you, it's, it's contemplative of the things that are important. So that, that's very helpful because what we were going to do is figure out a complement of ways to get to creative tax relief. And it may have not been enough or maybe it been too much and not contemplative of the, of the other things. So I find that helpful. I don't want to prematurely end this retreat, but I, I do thi, I do take that as a, um, that's, that is very helpful.
Okay. Councilman Missions?
Yeah, I appreciate that. Um, and, uh, you know, I'm just, I've got a different perspective than most people sitting here with this and it takes me back to that great recession, right? I was furloughed along with every other city employee. Councilmember Helgason was the only one that was fighting to prevent the Fifth Street Roundabout that year that resulted in the same cost of the furlough of the city employees, right? So the, um, the, the thing that I want to make sure that we're doing is we're looking at what truly is necessary, right? If we, we had conversations about potential recession, maybe that's coming our way. Well, it's probably time to tighten the belt, you know? I don't know what that looks like. Is that a hiring freeze outside of public safety, right? Where do we, do we save money with that? Um, what are, what are the options, the tools? And that's your job to figure that out, like, how can we tighten that belt and reduce the annual operating costs going into this next fiscal year? Because if we're already, I, I pulled up the, uh, what you emailed me on, uh, November 29, or somewhere around December with the managed vacancy list. And back then, when you take public safety out of it, we're looking at about 83 vacancies then. I don't know what that looks like now, right?
That's sworn and uns sworn, did you?
I took all public safety out. I just eliminated public safety, sworn, unsworn, all of it. I just took all public safety out and you're looking at, at, uh, 83 back then, right? And if we're still able to provide the services to our citizens the way we're staffed right now, then maybe we need to tighten the belt and take a look at those, you know, outside of public safety. We, we know we've got to solve the crime problem. We know we've got to fix that, solve that problem. We're going to talk about that Tuesday. Um, but in the other areas and the other arenas, maybe we need to take a look at how we tighten the belt.
Okay, so, uh, Mr. Bennett's suggestion is that we just end our retreat now and that way he's got enough information where he can start working things?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, so what I'll ask, and we've, we've done a round.
Yes.
With, with one, with one another. I may come back and ask for another round to meet one-on-one with each of you to, to really understand. And, and remember in, in that first round, I asked a, a legacy question. What is it that you want your legacy to be? And, and to think through that, kind of a, a broader understanding. And that legacy isn't just about you, it's also about the city. And so some of this, uh, Mr. Councilmember Missions talks about having been furloughed. One thing I want to avoid, um, particularly is with our workforces and the strides that we've made. I understand, um, tightening and being lean in some other areas. I, I, I would reflect on that, that 10 years that we, that we saw and the impact to the organization. Greg used the anecdote of the two budget analysts. I want us to be careful in that. Uh, there's, if there's one thing that I've learned in the year and a half plus that I've been here, is that Lynchburg does a lot with a little. And I, and I mean that. And I, and I think in thinking through those things, we need to be, um, cognizant of that. And so, uh, thank you for your time today. I, I may ask for a little bit more time with each of you as we move into the next couple of weeks. I see that Dr. Wilder's putting up his.
Oh, yes, Councilwoman Wilder.
Just trying to catch him forward with the, again, just thank you all again for everything.
But thank you.
I just want to remember, I appreciate the, the, the police, the firefighters, the police, appreciate them so much, all the workers, but we have so many great works in our community. And, you know, I, I talked with her, she worked in detention home and she was mentioning to me that she's been there for a certain number of years, a person coming in makes the same thing that she makes, you know? So we continue to have compression issues to be, to be addressed. So I, I appreciate all the workers, but we, I don't want to leave everybody else out, you know? So again, we have some great work and then the problem is now after COVID, some people are doing so much extra work because short-staffed, because more burden on them. We're going to need more police officers to address them because they, they may have more issues in the workplace. So make sure we're not forgetting all of our staffers in our community. They all need support. I don't want to be pissed, I don't want them to feel that they're, we're pushing them aside because they're not this worker or that worker.
Dr. Wilder, it comes through, we, we're here today, um, social ser, I mean, human services and, uh, Mr. Councilmember Missions has brought up those vacancies. Um, there's a high number of vacancies in here in, um, human services. And you talk about public safety, when you have child protect, CPS, child protective services, all protective services. And we're seeing kind of, no sooner do we get someone here, get them trained up, um, and it's just the level of stress in a job here in Lynchburg in that city, we talk city and county, where we're training, no sooner are we training, we're seeing move. And so when we think about targeted investment like what we did last year, we looked at CDL drivers, we looked at, um, uh, front Ford facing folks in water, um, because I, we use it all as an anecdote and I'm going to go and apologize at Hobby Lobby, but you can get a, a $20 annual, I mean, hourly salary at Hobby Lobby, you know, doing something a little bit different than what we're proposing. So, um, same kind of expectation as I build fiscal 24 is to those areas that we have particular need, really invest in those to make sure. really invest in those to make sure that we, you know, shoring them up, but also paying attention to other areas that maybe, and thinking about how to make sure the resources go as far as they do. So, Madam Mayor, thank you again for.
I've got just one thing, based on the dark problems, that I really appreciate it. One thing that I'll caution against that is an absolute morale killer in the city workforce is increasing base pay adjustments, right? Because it always makes it more expensive to fix compression. And then the compression fix never happens, it always gets prolonged. So we need to really take a look at not increasing base pay and making sure we're retaining our highly-trained, highly-qualified veteran employees and fixing those compression issues first before we start looking at base pay adjustments. That's just from my perspective.
Absolutely.
It's always been a morale killer. And when he mentioned that, as you said, human services or juvenile services, somebody that's been there many years, making the same as a brand-new employee, the reason that's happening is because the base pay adjustments continue to stack up, stack up, stack up. And then what becomes the elephant in the room is how much it's going to cost to fix compression after we've raised that base pay so much.
Madam Mayor? So to that point, just quickly, last year, we made strides with the police department. This year's the proposals with the fire department. We did, did do a 30, we took a certain amount, sorry, 30-year, we looked at a certain value. Obviously, those that have a year didn't get the same kind of increase. But it, to combat compression, just as you had said, is going to take year-to-year investment.
Absolutely. And I would also, you mentioned meaningful wage increases for city employees. I appreciate that. But what I appreciate more is when we're focusing that on the, the actual service-delivering workforce and not management and executives.
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, first of all, I would like again to thank all the staff that took time today to help set up, our AV people. Happy birthday, Josh. And also, because this was put together pretty quickly. So thank you for this retreat and all of you who put your hard work into it and for the day. For those of you who came and are watching, we appreciate you. I want you to know that we are all working diligently to make the best decisions for the city as a whole. We do not want to leave anybody out, and we want you to know that we are thinking of you collectively. And with that said, the meeting is adjourned. Our next meeting will be held on February 14, 2023, at 4:00 p.m. in council chambers. Thank you so much.